Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 6, 2017 Watertown City Council Work Session. The first item is called Order and then Review of Pre-Disaster Mitigation Materials. If you could bring that up, Pete. The Connington County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan is a tool that the whole county has for getting all of our ducks in a row should we be faced with a disaster. We'll have some pre-planning ahead of time. It identifies the various resources available to us and the types of disasters that we're likely to see. And this is put together by First District for the county. And since Watertown is part of the county, we will eventually adopt it. And this is something we already have now and we're doing an update to it. So there are a number of items that are in the packet and are available for viewing. I'm not going to go through all of them. But they are essentially just identifying the types of services that we provide as a city, where our critical facilities are, and the types of infrastructure that we have that might be at risk for damages in certain situations. So this is all enumerated in the plan. And there will be a final document shown for the City Council to adopt at a later date. But after FEMA reviews it and gives their blessing, that's when we'll come back and adopt it. So I guess if anyone has any questions about it, I'll try to answer them.
Mayor, what kind of disasters are we? Are these natural disasters or, you know, man-made? What does this all cover?
Any kind of disaster, and that could include fire, flood, tornado, you know, weather events or... Right, yep, yep. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll just move on. The next item on the agenda is Street Department Presentation on Snow Removal. Rob Bainon?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, let's see if I can take this thing over for a minute. All right. All right. What we have here is, I'm going to start a yearly presentation for our prior year of snow events. So actually, I wanted to get this done about a month ago, but I wanted to get it done before we went into this year's snow and ice. But fill you in on a few things about this summary that you have in front of you. Basically, this covers 2016 to 2017 from November 18th to May 1st. We did have snow on May 1st this year, so I don't know if you guys remember that, but it was short-lived. So anyway, in this summary, you'll find collected data from the dates that I mentioned about our snow and ice events. Which you have to understand, in this data we have here, we put information out there, the facts that we have, the costs that we spend, or dollars that are spent for cutting edges, fuel, contractor charges, sand-salt mix, overtime wages for our staff, and standard wages for our staff, also fuel and gas for equipment. What we don't include is like the cost of the vehicle or any repairs on that vehicle because that's something that you might go whole season and not have any repairs, that type of thing. The other thing that we didn't include in this, it's for our staff that's plowing snow. It does not include my wages or the foreman's wages. So, just so you're aware of that ahead of time here. But some of the variables to keep, to take into account as far as when you're looking at the difference between two comparable snow events having different costs, you know, the depth of the snow, the density of the snow, if it's dry and fluffy snow, or if it's wet snow, wet and heavy snow. Staffing for the street department, if we're shorthanded due to illnesses or vacations. Contractor availabilities, sometimes we have a lot of contractors and other times we don't. Equipment breakdowns, wind, you know, we could be replowing stuff because of the wind or additional snow that comes while we're plowing. The days of the week, if we plow on a Sunday, that's double time for our staff, so it gets quite expensive in a quick hurry. Time of the year, the spring, of course, the snow melts faster. We might get 10 inches and, you know, overnight you might lose three inches of snow just due to melting. And of course, the brine, the pre- and post-treatment of brine, that we're already seeing effects, positive effects from the brine, which we haven't had or haven't gotten to use it a lot yet, but we're excited about that. So anyway, let's see here. Actually, I don't know if you guys can see this, it is a bit small, but you do have the documents in front of you that you can look at. So, let's see. On these particular charts, some things, we do lay out the total accumulation, of course, all the things I mentioned about the contractor charges, cutting edges, sand-salt wages, overtime wages, and fuel. The days of the week, like I said, that's very important in this, too. The holidays, that gets expensive. But we also put timeframes on here when we started clearing the snow and when the streets and alleys and parking lots were cleared from curb to curb. These do reflect that timeframe. You'll see on most of these, the first event, we did not have the documented ending time, but it does, if you look under Event 1, you can see it was a two-and-a-half-inch snowfall that we went out and plowed. Now, the total on that event was, with all those charges and staffing wages, was $32,514. You know, this type of layout gives you an idea. At the end here, I'll give you a little rundown of averages for snow because people always wonder, what does it cost to plow two inches of snow? Or what does it cost to plow 10 inches of snow? This gives you a good idea of what that generally would average out to. Let's see here. I'm not going to go through each page, but I will go through a few pages and give you some highlights. On Snow Event Number 2, we had six-and-a-half inches of snow. These readings are official NOAA readings for snow in our area, so they're accurate. We've come up with a little different amounts that we figured we got, you know, some more, some less. But like a six-and-a-half-inch snow event costs just shy of $40,000 to clear. And of course, contractor charges were $19,461 of that total. So it's quite expensive. And you'll see on the bottom right-hand corner, we do have a chart showing each event, we broke it down for the total event, the percentage of contractors versus street department staff. And in general, we're at 60-40%, 40% contractor staff, which is right on track with what Sioux Falls currently has. Let's see. I'll take you through what we have here. Event Number 4, this one's kind of interesting because you'll see the total, this was just rain and ice, but this was over a three-day time span. And we put down over $8,000 worth of sand and salt mix. The overtime wages were just shy of $3,000 and standard wages were under $1,500. But this occurred, if you'll see the days of the week, this occurred on a Sunday through a Tuesday. So of course, on a Sunday, you're paying double time. And contractors cost the same whether they're working on a Sunday or a Monday, so...
Rob, can I ask you a question quick?
Yeah.
You know, when we look at the percentage, the ratios down here, that talks about the cost split, is that right?
Yeah.
What about miles split, miles of road split? How does that contractor miles compare to the city miles of road?
Right. I would say, you know, this would be a guess right now, but we do, the city staff is doing a lot more miles of plowing than the contractors are, I would say. And it's based on the areas that we're doing. Our teams work on from 19th Street East to 21st Street West and all the way north up into River Ridge, North Ridge, Eastwoods, Dakota Commons, all the way east over into those residential areas. But we do not do south of 212 generally. We hire that out and we hire the lake out. And if you can envision that, I would say if you take all the miles we have in the main part of town that we're plowing, we're doing a lot more miles with our city staff, I believe. Let's see here. Yeah, that percentage down there, though, of the contractor cost, I was, you know, I was thinking we're 60-40, but it was interesting to see after we added up all the staff we had each day, you know. Some days we had 10 city employees and other days 12, you know. And generally, our staff is there. If they're in town, even if they're sick, a lot of times they're at work, but that's when we need them. So the guys try their best to get to work, so... But yeah, let's see, did I finish? Oh, the ice event. But I thought it was interesting on a rain and ice event, just what it costs, you know, in this case, even that was quite expensive. But now, this was prior to us having the brine system in place. Later in the season, you'll see, we had the brine in place and just towards the end, but I think it was effective. Let's see here. Event Number 5 was a four-inch snowfall, which cost shy of $28,000. Event 6, we had an inch and a half of snow. We did not plow it. We just sanded, salted sand. There was no brine in that. Let's see, Event 7 was a five-inch snowfall, 43-8 for a total. I think I had passed, too. We had an event last year that we got, we were able to get done in just over 30 hours. But if you look at that event, the timeframe, here it is, it's Event Number 5. We started cleanup efforts at 5:00 AM in the morning on a, let's see, what day was that, a Monday? And because of the timing of the storm and everything, that was a four-inch snowfall, we were done in 30 hours. And that's with everybody going home to sleep. As you'll notice, most of these are two full days of cleanup. So you'll have just over, you know, over 50 hours in general. So, let's see. Go to Event Number 7, which was a five-inch snowfall, that was 43-8, I think I mentioned that one, yep, I did. Event 8, now that one, we did just sanding operations. We didn't plow, but that event came into just about $7,000, which was about half of the most expensive de-icing event we had, so... Event Number 9, 10, and 11 were all very cheap. Those were basically, the temperatures were, you know, we're in late February, early March, the temperatures are getting higher, the small amount of snow we had, we just did a minimal amount. We did some, you'll see on Event Number 9, we did some post-treatment with the brine system, and of course, everything was melted by noon, so... But probably the most interesting one in here is Event Number 12 was a 10-inch snowfall. Now, this was, this is in March, mid-March. That event cost $43,000 to clear. And if you'll notice, we did have an event, let's see. Actually, if you look, Event Number 2, 3, 7, and 12, were all five-to-10-inch events. And there was only a $4,400 difference between those from lowest to highest, ranging from $39,436 to $43,843. So our average on a five-to-10-inch snow event was $41,800 to clear. So I thought that was kind of interesting. Snow events that were, basically, we try to plow two-plus-inch events depending on the type of snow, if it's wet and heavy and if it's getting slick. Two-to-four-inch snow events cost averaged about, what did I have here, $30,000, I think, just over $30,000, yeah. So, and as far as the brine goes, we're shooting for about 50 gallons per lane mile. Last year, what we put down was roughly 66 gallons per lane mile. Right now, that brine to mix is for the water and the salt solution, or the rock salt, is about 10 cents per gallon is what it costs us. So hopefully, this document will give you some insight on what it costs us to do snow and ice management and removal. If you take a look, one other thing, Page 15 is kind of interesting because it breaks down to minimal snow and ice events, and then also the major snow and ice events. And it gives you an idea of where our dollars are spent on each event. And of course, staffing, you know. If you look throughout this thing, you'll see when we worked over a weekend, that's when it got expensive. You know, that's where the biggest expense comes in, staff over the weekends. And we had the first five events of last year were all on a weekend or a holiday. So we were plowing on weekends and holidays, and that got expensive in a quick hurry. So our total last year, last page here, was $253,507.81 for our contractor charges, cutting edges, brine, salt and sand mix, overtime wages, standard wages, and fuel and gas. That, there's one other thing I was going to mention. Let's see. I think that was about it, though.
Rob?
Any questions?
The pie charts?
Yeah.
Is that based on hours or dollars?
Nope, that was per day. So if we had, each day, we kept track of how many contractors we had hired. And we have all that information. We tracked everything on this stuff, about anything you could imagine, we had tracked. But so like if we had on a Monday, the start of plowing, we might have had 10 contractors. And on the next day, we might have had only seven contractors, so...
Oh, so regardless of how long, it's how many individuals?
Yes, correct.
Versus your staff?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Rob, I know several that sat in through with the presentation about this Sioux Falls Street Superintendent this summer, very interesting presentation. Some good takeaways from your department as far as things that can be utilized here in Watertown or...
You know, really, the biggest thing that I learned from those guys, obviously, the way they do their zone plowing is quite interesting. I think that can work in parts of their community. Ours, certain parts it could, but where we would struggle and I think would be problematic is to go to a zone plowing where you do streets and avenues is like the downtown areas where you don't have, people don't have a lot of places to park other than a public parking lot or out in front of their place. It would be difficult. You know, those are things we're looking at is to see, could we implement zone plowing and be more effective, get stuff done faster? That's stuff we're looking at. The brine, of course, they're using, they're using calcium chloride along with their brine mix, which is very corrosive, but it takes the temperatures down further. Where we're good, down to about 15 degrees with brine, we could get to a lot colder temp if we do an additional 5% or 10% mix of calcium chloride in there. But it'll get very corrosive, so... But it will clean ice.
What was their average, like $500,000 per snow event, something like that?
Yeah, I think their budget for the year was $15 million for snow removal, wasn't it? And I should have actually, that would have been interesting to compare some of that stuff from their information with ours, but you know, their snow budget, I think, is like $15 million a year. And you know, we're spending with what I've given you here, under $300,000, you know.
And they do have economy of scale.
Yes, yes.
That they can benefit from.
Yeah. You know, the, go ahead, Don.
I traveled with the crew about four years ago just to get a perspective on this. And the thing I took away from that is when people leave their cars in the street, it does mess things up because we have to go back after the fact. It'd be hard to put a dollar figure on that, but it does add, and meaningfully so, to the cost of a snowplow.
Right. And the police have been great on handling that prior to our staff getting like uptown. And Scott, maybe, yeah, Scott's back here and he might have an idea. But I believe I've heard numbers of over 100 cars having to be towed during a snow event now, or ticketed, maybe not necessarily towed. Do you know if that's accurate, Scott?
Yeah, I would say in cooperation with the street department and, you know, with Rob's department now putting out advance notices that streets are going to be cleaned and the police department as well, putting it on Facebook and every other social media site that we can get the word out, I think that's helped. But as far as ticketing, you know, we might ticket maybe 40, 50 cars during an event, but as far as towing goes, most of the people remove their vehicle, you know, the next day. And fortunately, we don't have to tow very many vehicles because that does get expensive for the owner of the vehicle.
One thing I was going to say, too, is the two-to-five that went away a few years ago was a little difficult, you know. We still did have issues with cars and stuff uptown, so that's something that I know was helpful to the uptown people that live in apartments and stuff, you know, uptown. But that's something I wanted to mention, too, with this, so we're making it work either way, so...
Rob, I've got one more question. I know last week, the Public Service Announcement came out as far as snow removal coming up this winter. Can you explain again, went through the streets and avenues as far as which days those are plowed? Go through Derby Downs and the lake area again as far as what the, you know, how that's handled out there because those are independent contractors out there.
Right. Our policy is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we do streets. And the opposite days of that, we do avenues. You know, Sundays, we, obviously, we plow on Sundays when we need to. A lot of times, we'll plow and do, try to get the highways and snow routes done and send the guys home and then pick up on Monday and go. But as far as out at the lake, we have a contractor that does the lake. And generally, when we're going to start plowing town, that contractor a lot of times starts even just prior to us. And early morning, he goes at 3:00 in the morning trying to get the lake done before traffic because as you can imagine, the lake being pretty much a single road around the lake, it's difficult with traffic. So when that contractor does that, he also does Derby Downs and Summerwood Development and the little developments around the lake. He picks those up at the same time. We do the same thing in town. We have started picking up this year now, we do everything River Ridge, North Ridge, Eastwoods, Dakota Commons, Kemp Place, we do all those areas now with snow gates. So we do pick those up. It's tough up in River Ridge a lot of times because of wind. We have a lot of, a lot of times, if we had three inches in town where we could use the snow gates, a lot of times, it doesn't always work out there. So we're forced at times just to put the snow gate up and go because of the blowing snow. But we do pick those up. Generally, we've been picking those up, trying to get all those developments on the first day. The problem we're having is we run out of time to get all those developments. They don't, when the guys are up like at River Ridge, we don't break that down into streets and avenues. And that's something we're looking at changing in our policies, that maybe we would hit those certain develops, developments on a streets or avenues day. So say like North Ridge, if we hit that on a streets day, maybe we would get Eastwoods on an avenues day. So we have the same team that generally picks up most at east side of town. The east team picks up North Ridge, Eastwoods, Dakota Commons, Kemp Place, you know, all down that whole side, so...
So again, using Derby Downs as an example, I mean, there's streets and avenues out there, you're not necessarily following the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday schedule for those, for that area.
Correct. And that's where we want to change our policy so it reflects how we normally would hit those. The first day of plowing, we get Summerwood and Derby Downs, we hit that on the first day of plowing is generally what we do. So the whole thing, not just streets or avenues, we hit the whole thing. So that is difficult, too, for people that are parked there. The police do know not to ticket and tow, though. If we plow a avenue on a streets day, you know, they're not going to ticket and tow somebody like that. We've, we have had a couple of times where it happened by accident, but that's what we're working to fix and clarify, so... Yep. Any other questions?
I'll make a comment, Rob. What really stands out when I look at this report is that once you're fully engaged, you know, those three, four-inch snowfalls all the way up to the 10, you did not lose any efficiency. That 10-inch snowfall, you handled just like as if it was a three- or four-inch snowfall. And that's amazing to see that on paper because that, I don't think people perceive, you know, they see the 10-inch snowfall and they go, oh, I'm not going to get to work for three, four days without, you know, getting stuck. But this information shows that you're just as efficient with a 10-inch snowfall as the medium-sized events, and that's great.
You know, I thought that was interesting, too, what you're saying there, Shane, because you noticed the costs and stuff, too. The timeframes were in that 50-hour timeframe. And then also the costs, you know, ranging from 39.4 up to 43.8, I believe. So for a total cost, which was quite interesting from a five to a 10-inch snow, so... So yeah, it was really, it opened my eyes, too, when we got this, finally got this all put together on what's really happening there, so... And hopefully, next year, we can put together even a more detailed presentation.
Refresh my memory, 253 last year, that was a pretty light year. It's usually up around 300 plus, isn't it?
You know, we budget, I believe, for the contractor portion of this around $250,000 a year. But when you add in all of our expenses, I actually do have the data to put together the two years prior to that. We just never put it all together in a presentation form, but we could do that and it'd be interesting to see how we've, you know, progressed cost-wise and some of the changes we've implemented and see how that affects things, too, so...
I second what Shane said. You could pick the numbers out, that does speak well to how well you operate. My seatmate here, John, mentioned, you do the math, that's a little over $11 a citizen for snow removal for the year. That's not bad.
Interesting, interesting.
It's a really nice report, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Rob. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the discussion on the visit to Brookings, the city, looking at the city-county government building. And Bruce Bueller had a PowerPoint that he was going to give and he wasn't able to come tonight. And I see there's people in the audience that probably came to hear it. I don't know if you were planning to participate in Bruce finding a chance to visit. And Mike, did you go? Bruce suggested that we postpone it for another meeting unless people have a really pressing need to talk about this right now, then I think that's probably what we'll do. Apologize for that. It was kind of a last-minute thing that he didn't come, so... It happens is right. Okay. The next item is future agenda items. Shane, you had one?
Yeah, I was going to invite Infrastructure Design Group to come do their annual bridge inspection presentation to the council. I can reach out to them and see if that would be something they're interested or have time to do at the next meeting and hope to give that presentation.
Being that we have the time, maybe we just talk about the bike path meeting. I did stop at that for a while, that got real good attendance.
It did, yes. Is Jay here? Let's see, he didn't know we were going to talk about this. But the bike path around the lake, we've hired Infrastructure Design Group to look at what's left to do and give us a plan of where to put it and cost estimate for how much to do it, maybe scope out in phasing how we would do it and budget for it. And I thought it was a really good turnout. And the consultant, Confluence, is teaming with Infrastructure Design Group to do this study for us. And Confluence mentioned several times afterward as we were cleaning up that they'd never had such a positive public meeting. A lot of times in those public meetings, you get a lot of positive input, but you also... A lot of times in those public meetings, you get a lot of positive input, but you also get balanced out with the negative. And there was very little negative. There was just a lot of, yeah, we need this. And the people that, you know, they, they maybe had different ideas about where the main route should go. But nobody was disagreeing that it needs to happen. So that was really good to see that. Um, the community's been asking for that project and um, looks like that it's, you know, there's going to be a, a group of people who are volunteering to serve on a steering committee and be neigh- neighborhood spokespeople. So that was a really good outcome from that meeting.
Ju- just, just a comment about that meeting. What I, what I was encouraged by was, yes, one, the, the, the turnout and the enthusiasm about getting the project done. Uh, from a financial standpoint, it was nice to hear that there are possibly any number of sources out there or resources out there that would help fund this project uh, to, to some extent as we go forward. Uh, but we're, we're to caution. I hope people don't think that, okay, now that we've got, we're laying out a plan that by the end of next summer, for example, it's gonna be done. No, it's not gonna, it's not gonna work that way. So we still need patience on the part of uh, our citizens that it's still gonna take some time uh, to get this project finished. But it, but it's a very good, encouraging start though.
Right, and I think a, a big takeaway, I mean, we, we have left the difficult part of the trail system. Um, we did the easy parts. So what's remaining will probably be more expensive than the rest of the trail system. So um, we, we'll likely have to break that up into numerous years and go after funding.
Kristen, maybe you don't know this, but how many dollars have been set aside the last four years for the bike trail?
That's a good question. I don't know that, but I can, I'll look into that and I can send that out.
It seems to me like it is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand or something.
I know we've been putting away quite a bit each year, so.
That's why I was kind of, I'm a little concerned that the dollars, you know, and I know it's gonna be a lot with bridges and whatever, so. But I know that we also have money aside, set aside for fi- I think it's been five years now that we've put money aside, so. At the tune of a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year.
Any other comments about the bike trail project? Uh, another project I'd um, like to talk about is we've been working on an update, an updated comprehensive plan for our community. And we'll be adopting that um, in the ni- next year or so. And I know Don had suggested that we tour a town that actually has a comprehensive plan and uses it um, religiously and, and what the benefits of doing that are. I, I really hope that we end up using our comp plan um, regularly and with every project. And so we're gonna put together a tour and visit a community that has done that and, and talk to some folks uh, about the benefits of doing that. Do you wanna add to that?
Uh, when I ran for council four years ago, I went up to Savage, Minnesota, the friend of a friend up there just to go see what they're doing because apparently he, he had spoke highly of how they ran their city. And I spent some time in the office with them and then he got me uh, to go drive around with him in his car. And then he showed me how things rolled out over ten, fifteen year period. So the plans they made and the, and the uh, things they positioned themselves for ten years and twelve years ago. Then he drove me around and showed me how that actually rolled out in physically in the community and what they did with moving roads, uh, properties, how they adjusted things, what strategies, what they tried to track to town. They, they just were so well thought out and not every plan works out exactly as you, you put it down on paper, but theirs worked out pretty close. And I, I walked out of there just so enthusiastic about doing some long-term planning. And I know Sarah, that's been a, a big thing for the mayor and we've talked about it. So uh, what I think the suggestion is, we maybe grab a handful of people and we go up to Savage, Minnesota and we have them walk through their plan and then again, jump in a car, go around and tour what they've been doing. Uh, doesn't mean they do everything right. Their community's about the same size as ours, although they are in a metro environment. But in terms of laying out and executing a good plan, that's a great place to go. So that's what I think we ought to do is we ought to grab a couple of carloads, get, you know, six, eight people and go up there and spend uh, you know, a half a day with them. And, and uh, I, I walked away so enthused about that, that I think that uh, it'd be good for us to do.
I agree, and I'm probably the choir, but I'm looking forward to that trip.
Well, I'll get it lined up then.
Thank you. I would also like to um, talk about our um, promotion of the airport and reaching our goal of ten thousand enplanements by the end of the year. Things are going along smoothly and we've got several incentives. And we've got the Watertown Bucks where if a person boards an airplane in Watertown between now and actually from November first until November twenty-seventh of this year, uh, they, if they save their boarding pass and bring it to the Chamber of Commerce, they can trade it in for twenty-five Watertown bucks. Um, and hopefully that will encourage people to use the, the service and also to shop in Watertown. Um, we, we want people to shop here, so that's an investment that the council voted on and made at the last meeting. Actually, we had a special meeting for that. That's going on. We also have a partnership with, now tell me the name of the company.
Cronky Sports and Entertainment.
Right, they, they are offering discounts on the Nuggets and the Avalanche sports teams. Uh, for, it's, it's about a third off for a couple of games that are on there now and they're going to be offering more.
Yep, I uh, I traded email with one of their execs today and there's two games on there now. One uh, one Nuggets game, one Avalanche game, but they'll be adding more as we go. So even as early as late tomorrow, we should see a couple or two or three more games get on there. And those are group discounts, but you don't need to be a group. One or two people can buy and get that discount. So they're doing a special thing for us and those are discounts up to thirty-six percent. Uh, I'll be going to an Avalanche game here at the, the end of November and I, I've not been in that arena. I'm told it's a very nice arena. But it's right downtown. There's a lot of things to do around it. So if, if, if you're looking for a, you know, a good tri- a good trip, short trip, uh, you can head out there and help us with enplanements. But also uh, there's a lot to do down there.
If you visit the flyaty.com website, you can see a calendar of what's going on in Denver. There's a lot going on in Denver, music, arts, food, um, lots of stuff there. So if you're looking for a getaway, that's on there. But you don't have to go to Denver or you, you can go anywhere and take advantage of this promotion. Um, even just flying to Pier to take in the trees at the Capitol, um, that works too.
Sir, can I address that?
Sure.
I was talking with Julie at the CVB and one of the things she's looking at is maybe arranging some type, type of a, you know, Christmas at the Capitol. The state Capitol really decorates itself very well. The staff puts up a bunch of trees and such. If you look at how the flight works, it's Watertown, Pier, Denver. We're competing for the same seats to that Denver, either a destination or hub, along with Pier. So if Pier buys, buys all those tickets, we can't get to Denver if, if there's not any seats left. But that Watertown, the Pier leg is all ours. So we're encouraging people to look for reasons to go to Pier. If you got business out there, it's a very inexpensive way to get there. Also just other things, because that's, those seats we don't have to compete for and that could make a difference in our count as well.
So I encourage everybody to use the airport and the, the flight is very comfortable and smooth. It's a jet. Um, it's free parking, the bags are free. It's, it's a good deal, so, and it helps our airport. And if we want better service, we gotta utilize the service that we have to show that there's a demand for it and then the service will increase, so if you're considering it, go for it. Anything else anyone wants to talk about? Well, okay, we've got um, gotten, getting out early for once, so we'll go ahead and adjourn. See you back at seven. I keep looking at that clock. It says ten after seven. It's wrong. It's ten after six. So we'll reconvene at seven o'clock for the full council meeting.